You ready? All right, I'm gonna call our meeting to order. Welcome to our commission meeting for June twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. We do have a quorum. Absent Commissioner Benenga is not here. Before we get started, check your phone. Make sure it's on silent mode. And I'm gonna ask everybody to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda is our, kind of our routine business for the county. Bills to be paid, employee action, anniversaries, et cetera. Anybody from the public like to address our consent agenda? All right. I would, any commissioner wanna, commissioner wanna pull anything off the consent agenda? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to our regular business. Consider a resolution to declare certain mobile home distress warrants for unpaid property taxes as uncollectible. Good morning.
Good morning, Chris Swanson County Treasurer. So I'm just gonna, just read this, just easier for me to read it. South Dakota codified law ten twenty-two thirty provides for the presentation to Minnehaha County Commissioners by the County Treasurer, all distress warrants returned by the sheriff as uncollectible. So submitted to you today are the uncollectible distress warrants returned by the sheriff's office in two thousand and twenty-four. So now these taxes will be added to an uncollectible list in a book provided for that purpose, and no distress warrant shall therefore, or they're after, I'm sorry, be issued therefore except on order of the board or on written demand by the sheriff. So you can see in front of you, the uncollectibles right there.
They're just gone.
They're just gone. Yeah, a lot of those houses are gone, and then you've got some that are in very, very rough condition, and no bidders on auction at the moment, but I think they wanna try to put them out there one more time before they, well, I guess that one of the first one, no bidders at auction, so that that is deemed uncollectible. But there are still a handful out there, you know, that are still being collected on that are pretty rough shapes. So we'll see what happens to those.
Okay. Anybody from the public wanna comment on this agenda item? Turn it to the commission for action.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Can you tell me about the ones that are replaced by a new one? Are the taxes owed on the actual old trailer?
Once those are removed, honestly, I don't know the answer to that. I would have to check, I will get back to you on that, but I think once they are gone, they're gone.
Okay.
But don't quote me on that. I will check on that for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kiple?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a resolution authorizing administrative officer to execute change orders relating to the Juvenile Justice Center project. Morning, Meredith.
Morning Commissioners, Meredith Jerko with the Commission Office. This is a change order for the Juvenile Justice Project for change orders under a hundred thousand dollars. So with this change order, it'll just ensure that construction is able to continue at a good pace. And just for kind of comparison, there was a similar resolution adopted by the Commission in two thousand and eighteen for the jail expansion project. And during that, there were two different change orders that came in under that hundred thousand dollar limit, so.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? Questions or action from the commission?
If I may?
Commissioner Bender?
I would just say that when we worked on the jail project, I think this process worked well. You know, it's a fairly small amount in percentage-wise of the overall project, and there are a number of checks and balances. It's not just that one person gets to approve the change order. It has to go through a process. And so I'm in favor of this.
Mr. Chair, just one point of clarification. There are no actual change orders we're considering here. It's just the process of if a change order were to come up over the course of the project, and it's under this amount.
Correct.
That we kind of delegate some authority to just keep that moving.
Yep.
Thank you.
I would move approval.
Second?
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kiple?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Last agenda item is budget follow-up. Not an action here, but a briefing from Susan. Good morning.
Good morning, Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. We've met twice previously this month, most recently last Tuesday, and we just wanted to come back and provide updates to you on the changes that you had requested last week and just run through those again. Just to start with, we'll review the outside agency changes. We'll review an updated means of finance and the updated long-range financial projections, and then leave time at the end for any additional direction that you have to our office to bring back to you for anything else you would like to see. Just to start, I do have an additional change that's not included in this material. We had received notification that we need to drop our Metro Communications general fund contribution down about fifteen thousand. So that's not included in this, but that will be included in the provisional budget. It'll be a decrease of fifteen thousand. So just know that there will be a slight decrease to the general fund budget request, but that'll be reflected in an upcoming presentation. I received that on Friday. So to start with, we just wanted to just run through the outside agency requests that we discussed last Tuesday. The items that are shaded in yellow are the ones that you had requested increases or changes to. So specifically, those were increase in ambulance services and Sioux Falls Development Foundation and Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. And additionally, we changed the domestic abuse fund allocation to a third, a third, a third between those three agencies, and then to make Children's Inn and Family Visitation Center whole. The decrease in that fund estimate is reflected up in the general fund contribution change. So you also had some additional questions about Lutheran Social Services, so that one's highlighted in pink. Before Meredith provides an update on that, I'll just pause to see if there's any questions or changes on the highlighted in yellow or if you wanted anything else modified. Okay, and I think there were some questions about Lutheran Social Services funding requests.
Yep.
And if it was court mandated, so Meredith has that information, so I'll turn that over to her.
Perfect. Thank you, Susan.
Hello again. So I reached out to Lutheran Social Services just to get a little bit more information on their application. This is for a point-five FTE employee, and so this person would be leading some of those MRT domestic violence groups. Those individuals who participate in those groups are referred to Lutheran Social Services. The bulk of those individuals are court mandated. There are some that are self-referrals and things like that, but a bulk, the bulk of those individuals in those groups are court mandated. They estimate that this would open up ten additional groups, which would serve approximately sixty more individuals. And I know we discussed last time that they recently had a grant-funded position with the United Way, which they're able to complete assessments faster. So as soon as the assessment is completed, then these individuals are placed in the groups, but they often have wait times for the groups. So if they can hire this half-time employee, they'll be able to offer more groups and, you know, shorten that waitlist. If there's any other additional questions about the program or what it's being used for.
Any questions or comments from the commission? I guess I have one, and I'd support the increase of twenty-two thousand eight hundred. You know, most of this is what we call justed impacted individuals. So the courts are saying, you know, if you go here, we'll reduce your, or lighten your sentence. But the fact that even gives me more hope is the fact that there's people self-reporting, so we're catching them before they're justus impacted.
Yep.
So I'm in favor of increasing or granting this request. Lutheran Social Services has been a fantastic partner to the county on our Juvenile Justice Center and so many other areas that it, it makes sense for us to support them in this mission of theirs because their mission is taking care of our county employees, our county citizens, so.
For the same reason I've said before, I don't, I think you can make that argument for anybody on this list, and we don't have, we didn't even receive a report from them. We don't have any control or any real knowledge about what they do. We had to even ask if it was court mandated. So I'm not in favor. We haven't said no to hardly anybody this budget cycle, and so I'm not in favor of expanding our nonprofits at this time.
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Meredith? Thanks for working on this and digging into it. I was just curious if, and you maybe already stated this and I missed it, but the grant-funded position, the grant funds have gone away, right?
No, so that was, that position started in January of this year. So I believe that that is funded.
Okay.
Through the end of this year, and they didn't mention anything in their application about it going away for the next year.
Okay, so they're not asking for us to replace the grant?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, this is just, they had that additional position, and so they're just trying to, once those individuals come through the assessment, that is, that grant-funded position does the assessments. And so now they're trying to fill their staff to be able to provide these groups, to provide the services.
Okay.
I guess I'm probably coming down on the side with my colleague Commissioner Bender on this one, maybe making the case for, I know we have the application process and seeing that they had, didn't participate in great detail in that. Just kind of thinking out loud here, again, all of these services, to Commissioner Bender's point, are valued services for our community. I wonder if we need a better, more rigorous method to triage some of these requests in the future, especially along the kind of human services line to see what, where we can find the proper synergy with our existing traditional county-provided services to leverage private sector partners. But I think we should probably have a higher bar, and I think this has been maybe an easy budget season where we've been saying yes to a lot of things. So maybe I would just press the pause button here and let this one go, revert back to its last year's budgeted amount for this one going forward. But that's just my thought.
I would agree with that sentiment. And also, just curious if we could ask when people, when these organizations are requesting an increase, if they could lay that out to Commissioner Kiple's point, when they make their presentations, if they make a presentation to us throughout the year. There were a few other ones. I remember reading somewhere in the notes that one organization brings in, I think it said millions in increased tax revenue. I'm not sure if they were specifically talking about the county, but I don't remember hearing that in an update throughout the year. So I would just love for those organizations, when they have the opportunity to present to us, to help us understand those things and not just read it in the application before budget season. I don't know if you can pass that on or if anybody's paying attention, but thank you.
Sounds like we'll be leaving that one then at the two thousand and twenty-four budget level, okay?
Moving on to the updated means of finance. This is the full means of finance for all of the funds that we are budgeting. The only two that changed from January eighteenth are the general fund and highway. This is reflected of still the three percent matrix adjustment. All the new positions are included that you had requested, and as well as the outside donation amounts are adjusted as you requested.
Okay.
I'm gonna skip through these pages pretty quickly because as you move down into this page, this identifies the details of what was changed from last, from the original requested budget to today's presentation. So you'll see the itemized detail of what makes up the million-dollar change on the general fund and a hundred and forty-six thousand on the highway fund. So that does bring our general fund cash applied to ten point six-six percent. And just, we'll pause there to see if you have any follow-up questions.
I guess the only point I'd like to make, if everybody's okay with me doing it, is our, you know, that cash applied at ten point six-six is a high percentage compared to historically where we've been. But when we look at the projected revenues and we back out the five percent, and historically, we collect almost every penny of that. That really lowers that cash applied amount.
It does. I mean, historically, we've tried to keep our cash applied target around eight percent with the, and that eight percent usually comes from that five percent holdback on revenue that we acquired by S D C L, as well as about a three percent savings on expenditures that we maybe, we budget but we don't incur. And with the, our forecasting and our budgeting in the last few years, we have been preparing for our ARPA funds to be fully expended, and so we reached that point in two thousand and twenty-five. So we have been increasing opt-out these last few years to prepare for that so that as we face this decrease in ARPA funding, that we can keep our taxes consistent. And so our cash reserves are adequate to allow a ten point six-six percent cash applied.
Commissioner Bender?
But the intent is not to stay at that high of a level. I mean, I don't think those slides are in this today, but it's.
They will be in a little bit in the forecast.
Okay.
No, you are, you are correct that we would, we will not intend to stay at ten point six-six percent indefinitely. You'll see, and when we get into the forecast, we'll bump it up a little bit for a year or two and then slowly drop back down to that eight percent threshold. And that's within the forecast. And as we, we've kind of talked, the forecast is just a forecast. So it's something that we will continually have to monitor throughout the year, as well as every budget cycle. Is the, if next year I have an eleven percent in the forecast, is that a reasonable number? Are our cash reserves at a point that we can handle an eleven percent cash applied rate? We'll have to continually monitor this and adjust as our actual finances show. And the best thing we can do is continue to monitor it and manage that so that we don't end up in a place where we increased it too quickly, too fast. Okay. I'll move on to the forecast. The forecast, we've seen this slide before, includes all of the previous information that we've discussed. We do have cash applied factors through two thousand and twenty-nine. The forecast does include our UC three expansion, which includes increases in costs in two thousand and twenty-six and two thousand and twenty-eight. And then as well, we've budgeted for new positions annually of about seven hundred and fifty thousand. So this slide is, again, the somewhat busy. So we'll walk through this again for those maybe haven't seen it in previous presentations. The blue bar are our revenue. The orange are expenditures. And then our blue line here are our cash reserves, our cash on hand. And then green is opt-out, our levied opt-out. And then Commissioner Kiple had requested, including a line indicating our opt-out capacity. So the difference between the gray bar and the green, excuse me, the gray line and the green line is that unused opt-out. So you can see that for two thousand and twenty-three, that that line, that differential between those two lines kind of shrunk, and that's because we've been levying additional opt-out. So as we go forward, you can see the trajectory is the same. And with the forecast, we, what we're trying to do is by the time we get down to two thousand and twenty-nine, have our cash, our unapplied cash balance about at twenty-five percent of our total expenditures. So this is the slide where we've kind of shared kind of the assumptions that are in that forecast. So you can see for two thousand and twenty-five, we have twenty, we have a ten point seven percent cash applied, two thousand and twenty-six, eleven point one, and then you can see as we go through two thousand and twenty-nine, that tapers back off. And so by the time you get, using these assumptions, you get to at that unapplied cash balance of about twenty-five percent.
If I may?
Please.
Can we flip back to the previous slide with the gray and the green line?
Yes.
And so the, the reason that the gray line, even through two thousand and twenty-nine, stays above the green line is because of the, if we follow the recommendation from the Financial Advisory Committee, that we always opt-out a year before we actually need it to make sure we have the money available to us. That's why the gray line always stays above the green line.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and you can see this in numbers form on this slide. So this, this was a new line I added this time to show the unused opt-out. If you passed opt-outs, then the amount of everything on this, on the slide. So for example, two thousand and twenty-seven, we would have unused opt-out capacity of just over three point eight million. On the presentation, then we, or on the forecast, we show an opt-out need of three million seven fifty the next year. So always staying one year ahead, based upon fans' recommendations. And, and as we've talked before, I don't want to have everybody get too locked in on these, these opt-out numbers. This is just in a forecast based upon inflation and growth numbers that will certainly be different. And salary needs, expense needs are going to be different than what we have in here. This is just so that we can see the trajectory of where we're headed and that we can plan accordingly.
Do all the revenues include at ninety-five percent of the levy?
This, this forecast assumes that we'll have all of that five percent holdback back. So that, that five percent holdback, we'll receive all of that.
So this already makes that assumption.
Yes, and it makes a three percent holdback for expenses as well, that eight percent cash applied, that if we keep our cash applied at eight percent, we will have a neutral budget, is what, from a cash perspective. So this assumes that.
So if we are only budgeting, or if that reflected a ninety-five percent of levies, it would look drastically different.
If we withheld that, then yes, we would have to, this would be, look very different. But as experience has shown us, we collect over ninety-nine percent of our property taxes every year.
Yep.
So historically, we felt very comfortable with that eight percent cash applied rate.
Okay.
And maybe we have to take a step back too, to tell the full story here, to go back into two thousand and twenty-four, and I don't know what it was in two thousand and twenty-three, but the cash applied was three point five percent. Maybe if you go down one chart with me. And then we have the over the target amount, eight percent for four consecutive years, with the idea of trying to get back to normal. And so my explanation of this, and you can give a more expert opinion, but the three point five, a relatively low cash applied in two thousand and twenty-four was because there was no sense using our cash reserves when we had the ARPA money to use up. So two thousand and twenty-four was artificially low cash applied, and then now that pendulum's kind of swinging the other way, that we're, now we have all these cash reserves that we've not used. And so we have a, basically, if we follow this forecast, a three to four-year drawdown of those cash reserves. Is that, is that a fair statement?
It is to a degree. So for two thousand and twenty-four, part of why we had a lower cash applied is we did increase opt-out slightly to prepare for the ARPA funds to be fully expended. The ARPA funds have been, have been covering between six to eight million a year of ongoing operational expenses. So if we wouldn't have been layering in that opt-out for the last couple of years like we've had, you would have seen a much higher increase in opt-out request coming forward to compensate for that, for that additional expense now coming in that, that our grant funding wasn't going to cover. So as we've been talking the last few years, we have to be, keep, we have to keep looking ahead to be prepared for that so that we don't see a dramatic increase in tax requests need. And so we've been layering that in over the last couple of years to prepare for that. And two thousand and twenty-five, we are there.
And just to follow up on that, and then you kind of see that in the graph form of this chart where there's no single year that is a huge jump up or down. It seems like a relatively smooth slope that people can set some expectations on. So I appreciate that. So I think we're following fan recommendations in a couple categories there. If I could turn us to the potential new opt-out. You've got that listed just, again, in our working draft of a forecast. I think we, these are all kind of, you know, some margin of error, plus or minus, that we could still achieve the goals of the fan and pick some new numbers here. But you've got us penciled in for two point five million, as how this is computed out?
On this forecast, it is assuming that two thousand and twenty-four budget, that we meet two thousand and twenty-four budget as is. As we've kind of talked in previous sessions, so far, two thousand and twenty-four, we are trending favorable on our interest income and some of our other income needs, and, and we're also trending under budget on some of our expense needs. So at this point, you know, the two point five, I think I'm very comfortable with, but I also think you could entertain something lower than that if you were wanting to have a lower amount. But I think based on two point five million, I hear it's a conservative number based upon where we're at today.
And if I can continue, walk me through, just make sure I'm reading the, if we're trying to stay one year ahead, if we just go by this as, as a very good projection, yet not a crystal ball, what, how am I reading this to read what we expect to use in two thousand and twenty-six? If I'm just trying to do a one-for-one, what we think we'll need to levy into two thousand and twenty-six, and I'm trying to opt-out one year ahead for the two thousand and twenty-five budget? Just make sure I'm comparing numbers here.
At six twenty-two.
So two thousand and twenty-six, we would, based on this forecast, we would use the twenty, the remainder of our two thousand and nineteen opt-out that we have available, which is six hundred and twenty-two thousand. We would use the one point five million dollar opt-out that was in, that was passed last budget cycle. And then we would use around eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand of this year's opt-out that would be passed for roughly three million dollars, I believe, is what that adds up to be. So then we would still have about a one point six million dollar capacity. And then if you passed a three point two five million dollar opt-out for two thousand and twenty-six, that would give us four point eight million per opt-out capacity, which in two thousand and twenty-seven, the need would be around four point five million, of which some of that opt-out need is just to replace an expiring opt-out.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for walking me through that. I follow you.
I guess the only part that kind of frightens me a little bit is we're budgeting to such a high level of our, I thought we were budgeting at ninety-five percent, but we're budgeting at almost receiving full tax. And boy, I mean, you take that even down to ninety-seven percent and not ninety-five percent. I mean, that's two, two million more that would be needed in opt-outs, so.
And that's partially why we've kind of talked a little bit how our interest income is conservative in the budget. We've had years where bank franchise tax comes in a million less. Where, and as I've said, you know, our interest income right now is three times what it was a year and a half ago. So we know that that will eventually come back the other way, where things will start coming back down. But we really don't have any control over like bank franchise. We get what we receive, and, you know, we, we're budgeting that at about a ten-year average, so it's about one point nine million, I believe, for the two thousand and twenty-five budget. But we've had years where it's been under a million. So we have to be conservative and prepared for those, those swings. And that's why I'm not recommending that we use this as gospel, that we need to, we need to continue to monitor it every year. And so although I have an eleven percent cash applied in next year, it might not be that.
Okay. Other comments, questions for Susan? Commissioner Blainberg?
Just a comment. I'm confident that I am just scratching the surface of my understanding of the budget. And so I just would like to give a shout out to the previous commission. I know Commissioner Kiple and I had nothing to do with the fan or the work that you do. You know, we just inherited all these blessings. I think it's great that we're reaching out to the community and asking for feedback from experts in these fields. And I just want to say thank you for your work on this because this is complicated enough as it is, but then when you throw in the ARPA dollars and all those changes and the way that you were able to explain this to somebody like me to make it make sense, I really appreciate it. And I think it's just further example. And I think it's just further example that I've just been witnessing over the last two years of how intentional the county is to be a good steward and to, to do a good job of using the resources that we have. So my comment is, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm going to ask for public comment at this time. Anybody from the public like to comment on our budget presentation?
And Mr. Chair, is it at our next regular meeting, that if we want to consider an opt-out or not, we have to be prepared?
Yes, that'll be at July 2nd meeting. Yep. And I think we've already discussed preparing a resolution for 2.5 million. Is that right, Tom?
That's correct, 2.5 million.
Not to be levied, but to be available. So, yeah. All right. No public comment? No more comments from the commission?
I have one more comment, if I may.
Please.
Just, you had mentioned that the 2.5 was a wise area to be maybe, but that potentially we could consider lower. Can you give me an idea of what ballpark you were thinking would be still in the appropriate?
With where the interest income is trending at this point, I think you could decrease it to about a 1.5 million if you wanted to. If you weren't comfortable with the 2.5 million, that would assume then that we would need to use some of those reserves into the, into the forecast as we move forward, because that would be coming in over budget. You know, our income would be higher than what we'd originally budgeted for that. You know, the only thing with, you know, with the interest income is, again, we don't control all of that, because the feds will set their rates. If you've been following the market, they kept rates constant for this last month. Eventually, they'll start decreasing, but you know, we don't really know when. So I do think that you could entertain something slightly lower than that. I wouldn't go probably much lower than a million and a half.
Not to pile on work, but would it be possible to see this with either a 1.5 or a 2 million number instead of the 2.5? Could you maybe email that?
Through, would you like to see this and this?
Yeah, just for comparison.
Yep, I can do that.
Thank you.
Spreadsheet can be changed easy, right?
It can, it can. And if you have interest in pursuing a different amount, too, we can prepare a couple of different possible options as well, to be prepared for next week. So we would just need the direction from the commission.
Yeah, we try to be conservative in our budget estimates. So I think we, you are doing a great job on it. But yeah, we do need to ask all the questions and, yeah, so. All righty. Any other commission questions? All right. Thank you, Susan. Moving on then to our oper, maybe I should clarify one thing on the budget. Next step is just the opt-out discussion.
July 2nd would be the opt-out discussion. And then July 16th, we would bring basically a recap of the budget back to the commission. And at that time, the commission would authorize the auditor to publish the notice of the provisional budget.
So those questions that Commissioner Blumberg asked, we will see on July 2nd, then? Or that would be our?
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Moving on to public comment. Anybody from the public that would like to address the commission on a non-agenda item? Morning, sir. You have five minutes.
I'm John Cunningham, 4904 South Oxford in Sioux Falls. I was in Mexico for the last couple of weeks, but, but following the events in Minnehaha County on the web, and very concerned. The term election integrity is, is very important. The public confidence, more than the integrity itself, the public confidence in our elections is extremely important. And we've seen a concerted effort recently to undermine public confidence in our, in our elections. And I believe that that's deliberate. From what I read, and I, and I wasn't here to hear the comments, but I understand that our county auditor wants to go back to 2020 election and analyze that, and has forwarded data to an amateur analyst who has found statistical anomalies. The effort to go back to 2020 begins with 2020. In the 2020 election, we had a person who did not have the strength of character to accept the will of the people. And loser, and weak and loser are the two words that that person cannot accept. And so somebody else had to be responsible for his loss. And the whole election fraud hoax came out of that situation. Unfortunately, millions of people believe, they have no evidence to support it, sort of like a belief in God. We believe in God with absolutely no physical basis to do so, but we believe it. And the election fraud people believe in election fraud, and they want desperately to find some physical evidence that, that it exists. And going back to the 2020 election, it's not for the people in Minnehaha County. It's for the, it is to support that false narrative. And that's the entire purpose of it, in my opinion. Therefore, I think something needs to be done to, to rein this in. It's, so this person found statistical anomalies in 2020. Hello, this is Minnehaha County. We are a statistical anomaly. 42% of the county is, is registered Republican. 100% of the elected officials in this county are, are Republican. That's a statistical anomaly. But Republican and Democrats aren't, well, they complain about the outcome, but they don't complain about the process. They don't believe it was, it was screwed to, to benefit Republicans. This is, this whole narrative thing is, is undermining the confidence in our election process. It's, the term election integrity is, the people say, we want to build confidence in our elections. And the, the exact opposite is happening. And I believe the actual intent is to destroy people's confidence in the election. So I, I think something needs to be done. And I don't, I don't know exactly what the processes are. You don't have the authority to fire a constitutional officer, so I don't know what you can do. But, but this, this problem of, of constantly attacking our elections in order to, to throw doubt is, is just bad for, for Minnehaha County, bad for the country. And I'm sorry, I don't have a recommendation on how you can fix it. But thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. If you haven't signed in, please do so. Anybody else for public comment? Steve, were you going to address on road issues, or I'm not, I think it'd be great to hear from you.
Morning, Commissioner. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. It was a pretty busy weekend with the Highway Department. At one point, we had 10 of our county roads were underwater and were closed. Fortunately, the water's been receding rapidly. We're down to three roads closed as of this morning. Highway 104 Northwest at Colton, up at Buffalo Slough. Flood control structure is still holding water back, so that road's underwater. Our other two roads are Highway 122 West to Midway Corners at the Big Sioux River. The water has receded to the point where it's to the shoulders. So we're anticipating that road should go open later today. The other road is Highway 130 in Renner. And as of 8 o'clock, the only one lane, only one direction was underwater. If the water keeps going down, that should probably open tomorrow. But we're actively out cleaning debris, checking all of our structures. We're documenting everything we find, all expenses, and just in case we get to that threshold for possible FEMA reimbursements. And we're working with emergency management on that.
Questions for Steve? Any roads damaged?
So far, no, but they're pretty saturated. So we're watching truck traffic. There's a lot of trucks hauling out of Dell Rapids right now, using any road they can to get material down to Iowa, especially for the railroad. A lot of ballast comes out of Dell Rapids, out of the LGI versus pits. So we're trying to encourage them to use our better roads.
Good to know. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
Commission liaison reports. Nothing? All right.
Mr. Chair, I've got, we had planning and zoning last night, joint with the city and the county planning commission alone. We had one issue that was somewhat contentious, that we'll see if there's an appeal on it, a conditional use permit, but we'll deal with that if it comes. And then at the county meeting, we had a couple more chapters of the comprehensive plan laid out with some of the density zoning concepts that I think staff with Density Zoning Task Force came up with a, a few very modest reforms that I think are moving some things in the right direction. So that will, I think we'll probably ask Scott maybe to come and give this body a presentation of just where we're at with it. We kind of left it with, we got a couple chapters of the comprehensive plan left to review and at the planning commission level. And then we were also talking about the method of getting public input. And we kind of, this probably extends our timeline a little bit, but I, I value probably getting quality public input on some of these reforms more than the urgency. But we talked a little bit about getting input from rural areas, maybe this fall after harvest season. It's hard to get a lot of engagement before then. But that, that'd be another thing we could get Scott's input on, is just kind of the latest timeline and how we could help him get engagement from the community and feedback on a few of these changes. But other than that, I'd say it's just in process. And then just a reminder that we'll have a brief meeting with the city of Sioux Falls at 5 o'clock today, a joint meeting on a rather simple text amendment. So I don't expect it to take very long. But that's the extent of my planning and zoning items. That's all I had.
Thank you for doing that one, Commissioner. All right. Any other liaison reports? Any non-action commission discussion? Commissioner Bender, I'll start on the end.
Oh, I just wanted, and I wasn't exactly sure where to bring this up, but when we were approving the bills today, when you look through the bills, the thing that really struck me is there are just pages and pages and pages of payments to people who volunteered to assist with the election. And I know there's a group next door today working on the, the post-election audit that's required now by statute. And I just really wanted to thank the people who dedicate their time to doing that. We all depend on those people for a fair election. And, and I really appreciate all the time they put into it.
Yep. Building on that, I'd maybe do a special call out to our three friends that were on the recount board that got appointed by a Second Circuit judge to serve as the recount board and make some tough decisions and, and go through that process. But it's, it was a long process yesterday, but it seemed like it was organized and diligent. And, and so we can have full confidence in, in those results. And yeah, we'll see what comes today with the post-election audit as well.
All right. Commissioner Blumberg?
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly recognize and thank all of the people who have been involved with the cleanup and dealing with safety issues with the water and the rain and the flooding. I know Highway, we already got an update. They've been very busy. I'm sure the sheriff's office has been very busy. And big shout out to emergency management for the work that they've been doing. And then in addition, I just, I think of all the township people who have been working. That's not their job, their full-time job. It's often their second or third thing that they have to pull at their time. And so I know it's a big lift when there's so much work to be done. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who has worked to keep those roads safe and deal with all the consequences of the flooding.
All righty. We are going to go into executive session. So I'm going to look for a motion to enter exec session for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law 125, 213, 4, and 6.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll clear the room and go into exec session in a few minutes.